Everybody please rise for the invitation. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life and for the opportunities you give us to serve you and to serve others. Help us to act with character and conviction. We ask that your wisdom and your grace will guide us. We pray these things in your name, amen. Please remain standing for the Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can you call the room?
Mr. Leighton? Mr. Leighton, are you available on the telephone? Mr. Owen?
Yeah.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mrs. Hughes? We do have a quorum with three, correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Just slipped on.
Just double checking, yes. So we do have a quorum present, thank you.
The approval agenda, I just have one item, and that is item twenty, I'd like to switch to formal counsel. And that is on the salary resolution, item twenty. Any other requests or changes? Can I make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three zero. Okay, now we come to citizens' participation, and first one left is Mr. Roy Riffle.
Good evening, Roy Riffle, two zero zero two four Barker Street. I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about the Justice Center that got a meeting or two ago, moved forward a little bit more. And I was going through some of the, the old agendas, and I, and I watched the old city council meeting, or I'm sorry, the, the city council debate where the council people went up and, and debated. And the three people that are new that sit on our council today are Steve Owen, Tyler Graves, and Andrea Hughes, I shouldn't say new, but got, got reelected or put into position. And one of the things that I thought was interesting was all three made a promise to their people that to gate their votes was that they would not do anything to raise our taxes. And I wanted to talk a little bit about that, that Justice Center. Well, one, it's being proposed at four million dollars, which we all have to know that that, that's a crazy low amount. City of Gardner did theirs for ten million dollars, I think that got approved like a couple of years ago. And if we're really building something that's going to be feasible for a period of time, there's, there's no way four million dollars is going to cut it. Also, our police station we have now, now I didn't call request or look into anything, but I'm going to assume that if we are not even halfway through paying for that police station. We easily have to owe several hundred thousands of dollars still on that police station. And then in that anticip-, or in that conversation, it was talked about how it would go to a bond, and we would have to probably have two bonds to raise the mill levy. One for building the Justice Center and another one for maintaining the Justice Center. Well, that raises our taxes. And I want to remind the council that the city of Spring Hill has the highest mill levy in Johnson County, which is just ridiculous. And which is why we can't buy anything, we have to put out bond issues, we can't buy police cars, we have to lease police cars, which is just absolutely crazy. And so, and then I saw a post of Tyler Graves where he said that he didn't vote to raise our taxes. And, and I want to reiterate that if you vote on anything that moves something forward, that in the end will raise our taxes, you voted to raise our taxes. And I also want to remind you too, as much as I appreciate the mayor taking the tab for the conceptual design. It was talked about doing a mail-in ballot. Well, that mail-in ballot's going to cost somebody money, and it's the city of Spring Hill taxpayers. They'll pay several thousand dollars for a mail-in ballot. Now, if we're smart, we would wait and put it off until the presidential, or not presidential, the November ballot, and then we won't pay anything. But anyways, I just wanted to throw that all out there, that the people that voted yes did vote to raise our taxes, and they did move it forward. If you don't believe in raising taxes, don't vote for something that is going to, in the end, make our mill levy even higher than what it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riffle. Mr. Boswell?
How you doing, gentlemen? I'm sure you've all driven down Webster a time or two in the past old month or so. And I'm sure you've seen the property that used to be owned by, I believe, the Wimpy family. I believe it's sold or something, but they were building onto the garage. And the wind blew over the construction. Well, they've got one wall up, but the rest of the construction is just haphazardly laying there. It's a little concerning and disheartening when it's on a main street and it's just sitting there like that, which is an imminent danger, because that wall can fall again. And it's been over a month, and our codes enforcement can't even see what's going on. It's a little frustrating, it's a little disheartening, and I think we need to have better standards as far as those things go. We need to keep on top of those things, and I also wanted to speak about the police station as well. And I believe that as Spring Hill grows, we are going to have a need for a new Justice Center at some point. But before we go jumping into building one, I think we should work on more businesses to get a better tax base so that we can have some money to pay for it. That way, maybe we don't have to raise the mill levy. Because as it was said before, we have the highest percentage in Johnson County. And that's, that's pretty sad when you look at how the, the, our roads, our condition is, and you look at the condition of just a lot of the public property around it. It's just, it's pretty sad that we're paying such high taxes. And we're not really getting the things that we need really done to take, being taken care of. But thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Burton, can you, on the Webster? I don't know if you're aware of it or not, or?
Thank you. Yes, and we were notified of that, and we did submit or send notice to the owner. In between, two days before notice was up, the ownership changed. We have re-notified the new ownership.
So we're doing it, thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council?
Tim Spader, six oh one North Jackson. I'm standing here, I come and listen all the time at the citizen participation, and I'm starting to see we have people up here just rambling, not getting to the point. I just heard it again, about the codes violations. And the individual, I see these code violations in my own neighborhood. So I do agree with this individual, somebody needs to be doing their job. I've been here several times, I've met with several of you, I've met with the mayor. So at some point, yes, we need to enforce the codes and not point fingers in other directions. Until you fix your own yard, don't be coming up here and pointing at other people. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Spader. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda, as I said, just one item. I'm moving to formal, item twenty. Can I get a motion?
Go ahead.
I move, we approve the consent agenda as stated with the item number twenty being moved to formal.
Second.
Again, all in favor? Aye, three zero.
On mine, Chris Leighton.
Oh, okay.
Had some speaker issues.
Oh, okay. And you, so you voted aye on that, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And you did hear that we're moving item twenty to formal?
Yes.
All right, perfect. All right. Uh, we'll go ahead and take item twenty now in the formal. Ms. Jones? Ms. Jones, as we, we talked about earlier today, I had some citizens that had some questions, and I figured if we did a, a little presentation on it, we'd probably answer their questions at the same time.
Okay, yes, thank you, Monica Keesha Jones, HR Manager for the city, hello everybody. And so I'm here to talk about the salary resolution for the city effective for the 2021 year.
I'm not sure if anybody, is the microphone on for her? Seems a little low, I just want to make sure everybody hear.
I can hear it clear online, so I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, is that better?
I think a little better, yeah.
I'll lean over a little bit.
There you go.
So Monica Keesha Jones, HR Manager for the city of Spring Hill, and we're here to talk about the salary resolution that is going to be effective for the 2021 calendar year for our positions with the city. As you can see from the information that was submitted, this range moves from last year's resolution by one point three percent based off of the Consumer Price Index. And I did check this morning for the November totals, and they had not changed, so nothing's changed on what was submitted in the packet.
All right.
And so I, I know that we go over this on a yearly basis, so if there's any specific questions anyone would have, I'd love to start there versus reading through the information there.
Anybody up here have any questions?
I do. It's a one point three percent increase.
Yes.
And that's for all positions in the, with the city?
It's all of the positions except for the very first one, the seasonal temporary positions, that range stayed the same, but all of the ranges starting with number seven increased by one point three percent. There is the addition of the captain position, and that position was slotted into this particular resolution, be so that we would get it after the lieutenant position, but before the assistant chief position.
And this is to go into effect when?
Well, it'll go into effect for the 2021 calendar year, but it'll be for the particular pay period, so it'll be effective on the twenty... Excuse me, one second, I'll pull that date up here. The twenty-sixth of this month for 2021. And to be clear, that this is just for the pay ranges for the positions, not any particular person.
Any more questions?
I mean, I just wanted to clarify, this is just to change the pay ranges, but people are not getting pay increases based off of this. That's going to be based off of their yearly evaluations.
The only caveat to that statement is that because this changes the ranges, it changes the minimum of an range. So if we have an employee where their current pay is below the minimum, that will subsequently change their rate to get them to the minimum of the range.
Correct, there was that caveat, but the point is, is that people's salaries are not just getting bumped across the board because of this.
That is correct.
And that was what my point was.
How many changes are affected by that, people not at the minimum? Or not people, positions? How many positions would that, would that entail?
So I did pull the data to see what kind of impact we would have, and unfortunately, I didn't bring that with me because I was waiting to see if it was going to be approved to have official numbers, but it was only a couple of in positions that had below the range. I can get the exact numbers for you. At break, and if you need me to bring that back for you.
Mr. Eckert, is your microphone on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Eckert, any more questions?
I, I don't have any more questions.
Mr. Leighton, anything from you?
No.
All right, I will entertain a motion. Do you want anybody?
Yeah, I'll do it. Move to approve Resolution 2020 dash twenty-five, salary twenty, uh, 2021 salaries of various city officers and employees of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas.
Okay, you have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so it's all opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so it's three, one.
And was Eckert the no?
Yes.
Okay, that's what it sounded like, I just wanted to be clear. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next one, and that is, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, can you repeat that vote?
Was, would be three yeses, one no.
Thank you, and Mr. Eckert's the no?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next one up is Mr. Burton, rezoning.
Good evening, thank you. Sorry about the delay there, I wanted to make sure I had the ordinance number. In formal action tonight, we have an ordinance, number twenty twenty dash twenty, a rezoning of application Z twenty-eight twenty twenty. This is a request to rezone the property located approximately at one sixty-nine highway or K seven and one hundred and eighty-third street. It's known as eighteen-three eight-five zero, or eighty-five, US one sixty-nine highway. It's from an RR Rule Residential to an M-one Industrial. The background a little bit is, Mr. Russell Davis has submitted a rezoning request to rezone ten acres of property from RR Rule Residential to M-one. Legal descriptions in there. A little bit of analysis on it is in the November fifth, twenty twenty, regular planning commission meeting, it was a public hearing was conducted for the rezoning. And staff report, and there's clarifications of some questions to the planning commission, as well as the public. The, of course, the copy of the minutes are in the, in your reports, as well as the staff report. The public hearing following it, it was unanimous vote by planning commission to recommend approval of the rezoning. The fourteen-day protest period has passed, and no petitions or any type of conversation to staff or officially sent to the city has been received. The alternatives are to approve, override the planning commission's recommendation by a three to two vote, or send it back to planning commission, deny or continuance. Mr. Jenkins has the review on the draft ordinance. There's no budgetary impact, and it's a recommendation by planning commission and staff to approve the rezoning.
Are there any structures on that property?
Not on this piece of property. On the main property, it's a Jenkins property, and the brick house is there with the barns.
Okay.
This is south of that.
Okay.
Mr. Leighton, any questions?
No, sir.
Then I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, or, yeah, Council President, I approve, or make a motion to approve the consideration for ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty, the rezoning of the Jensen subdivision.
Second, any discussion? We need to do a roll call, correct?
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero zero.
Thank you, Ms. Burton.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Ms. Landis, I guess you're up for a couple of them.
Thank you. The next two items that are on the agenda are very similar in nature, in that one is for the sewer rules and regulations, and one is for the water rules and regulations. And to give you a little bit of background as to why we're bringing these to you now for an update, is that both sets of regulations haven't been updated since 2013, and they've served their purpose well over time. However, it was time to do some updates to them. And early this year, when we encountered the impending results of COVID, and how that it was going to impact in the layoffs, and the potential loss of homes and foreclosures, and all those things that were, were considered early in the year. We wanted to be able to extend our payment arrangements for our utility customers. So that is why we even embarked on this journey to begin with, because the current rules and regulations didn't give us the authority to really work with our customers the way that we needed to. And so when we started down this path, we decided that there were actually more than just the one item that needed to be addressed. So what I provided to you in the agenda packet is some very lengthy documents, but one of them is the redline version, one of them is the updated version that we're proposing, and the memo accompanied it to just basically outline the, the few items that were changed. So if you would allow me to just go through the couple of items that are changing, or being proposed to change in those, I want to make sure that I thank the people that worked on this, because our utility billing clerk and our utility superintendent put a lot of time and effort into this in the front end. And then several department heads and our city attorneys, the administrator, everybody pitched in on the backend, and went through both of the documents to make sure we were putting together a good document. So, and thank you to all of them for their work. In the very first one, it's sewer regu-, rules and regulations, these, we're proposing that this be adopted at this meeting, however, it would be effective with January one of 2021. And the Article Three, that's currently called the Sewer User Charge System, has been renamed as Sewer Rates, and that is to keep it more in line with the util-, or with the water rules and regulations. We have deleted the section related to the need for a separate fund to account for system development fees. Early, when this was originally put in place, we did have that fund set up, it was accumulating dollars for both the water fund and the sewer fund. In order to keep those dollars separate, account for them the way that they really should be accounted for, we have moved them back to their respective funds and have inactivated that fund. So removal of that item there is appropriate. Also, deletion of the section that allows the transfer of unpaid balances from old utility accounts to new service accounts. While this is a great customer service or customer friendly approach, it does not serve the city very well, especially when we have such a high collection rate for our sewer and water accounts, mostly our sewer accounts. Article Four in the rules and regulations has been renamed to powers, authority of city administrator. It was previously named powers and authority of director of public works. In that section, we have added some authority for the city administrator to, to, or the designate, to establish, maintain, and update the policies and procedures, and as well as grant deviations and/or waive all or some of the requirements under the rules and regulations. This is where we're looking for that authority to be able to work with our customers better. If we can establish those policies that work best, then we don't have to keep coming back to even changing the ordinance every time something changes in our economy or with our, our utility systems. Additionally, we have deleted the penalty section in that, in there, because those violations are already addressed in the ordinance, it was duplicate information. Article Five, this is really just a note, so the entire Johnson County Environmental Sanitary Code is referenced in our rules and regulations. We thought that this was redundant, that we might just take that out and, and refer to, or include it by reference. However, as we went back and we looked at the history of putting this all together, we found that it's not exact to the we found that it's not, um, exact to the Johnson County current, Johnson County Code, um, or Environmental Sanitary Code, and so we have left that section in. However, we, with the understanding that when the new Public Works Director does come on board, it will need some attention, and so we'll want to go through, we didn't want to take it out knowing that we, or incorporate the entire current code by Johnson County, not knowing what that impact might be, so we have, um, suggested here that it stay in the way it's currently written. So those are all the changes that we're proposing. Do you have any questions on what we've proposed here for the sewer rules and regulations?
Mr. Leighton, anything?
No questions.
No? Okay, well, we would recommend approval of Ordinance 2020-dash-21, adopting the sewer rules and regulations, first edition 2021.
I like your motion.
Mr. President, I move we approve the Ordinance 2020-dash-21, which is the 2021 Sewer Utility Regulations.
Second.
Second, any discussion? And, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Ordinance passes four, zero, zero.
And I guess the next one's you, too.
Thank you. So this is, uh, related to the water rules and regulations, also labeled first edition 2021, it would take effect January 1, 2021 as well. In the section 16-dash-102, which is the definition section, we did make some additions, deletions, and changes to definitions to make the document more readable. Under section 16-dash-103, we did have the addition of language to state that water is, um, distributed by the City of Spring Hill, it's not treated by the city, and instead it's purchased from Miami County Rural Water District Number 2. That was not in there, in there previously, we wanted to make sure it's very clear, so where that's coming from. Um, we did delete the violation section here, because again, it is addressed in the ordinance, and then we did delete the wholesale water section, because the city does not furnish wholesale water, we're just a distributor. And under section 16-dash-105, under Billing and Bill Payment and Collections, we did delete the language, um, related to a specific payment arrangement, and how it was, it was outlined out in there, and again, added the language asking for the authorization for the city administrator or designate to create the policies necessary in order to be able to work, uh, with the customer, or it's in the best interest of the customer and the city. And then also the deletion of the language allowing transfer of unpaid balances from old utility accounts to the new service accounts. There's in a section, in section 16-dash-110, um, labeled Extension of Water Manes, we did delete the entire section, as most of it was no longer relevant, but we did add a, a sentence stating that the water main extensions are addressed through improvement agreements, when that process with the developer, through the planning process. Section 16-dash-116, the Appeal Procedure, we changed this language just to better clarify what that procedure is for a customer appeal. Section 16-dash-117, under Public Records, we did delete the entire section, uh, because it is, that is a Kansas statute, it's outlined somewhere other than it didn't necessarily need to be in this document. Also, section 16-dash-117 is very similar to the other, uh, to the sewer rules and regs, in that we added the language allowing the city administrator or designate to establish, maintain, and update policies and procedures, as well as grant deviations, and/or waive all or some of the requirements under the rules and regulations. Does anyone have questions on these proposed rules and regs?
I, I do, you, you talked about deleting accounts or closing accounts, was, explain that a little bit more if you could, please.
So, there is language in there right now that says that if you move out, uh, and leave a balance on your account, maybe you've been sent to collections, or maybe it's just been unpaid, the language right now says that if you want to come back in, whether it's 30 days down the road, or three years down the road, you could open an account, and we would have the authority to transfer the old balance to the new account, and then you could just pay on everything moving ahead. Our experience is that oftentimes, that new account may not get caught up in paid, and so it's better for us to require payment on the old account prior to letting them set up the new account. So we collect payment on any old debt with the city until, and before, um, so we're not denying them service, we just require payment on the old accounts that they owe with us, instead of transferring it to the new account and getting further down the road with that. Any other questions?
Mr. Leighton?
No questions.
Okay, well then, we would recommend approval of Ordinance 2020-dash-22, adopting the Water Rules and Regulations, first edition 2021.
Mr. President? I move we adopt Ordinance 2020-dash-22, which is the 2021 Water Utility Regulations.
Second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Graves? Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Ordinance passes four, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council. First item is item number 26. Uh, this relates to the city's actions on November 12th, where you repealed the ordinance that required the payment of an annual dog and cat tax. Uh, that is before you now is the recision of Resolution 498 that established the license tax. As you know, we established most of our taxes, or fees, by resolution. So recommendation would be to approve the, uh, adoption of the designated resolution, and I don't have the number.
It would be 29?
Actually, I have it as 28.
28?
R-28.
Is that accurate, Ms. Kennedy?
Right, move to approve Resolution number 2020-dash-R dash 28, Resolution rescinding Resolution number 498 pertaining to the establishment of annual tax on owners and, of dogs and cats.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Wolf?
Aye.
Aye. So four, zero, one, four, zero, zero. Thank you. Chance? Mr. Hendershot? I believe the next one's yours.
Are you on number 27, right?
I am on number 27, yes.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, and thank you, Council, for your attendance this evening. Um, before you, on this one, on this item is a resolution that adopts Kansas Homeland Security Region L Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is an update, um, from the 2014 plan. The Kansas Division of Emergency Management, along with FEMA Region 7 officials and representatives from local jurisdictions, reviewed this 2019 Kansas Homeland Region L Plan, and approved it contingent upon this official adoption of the participating, participating governing body. The Region L Plan is an update to the 2014, and prepared with and for the jurisdictions within Johnson, Wyandotte, and Leavenworth Counties in Kansas. It is desirable for the City of Spring Hill, Kansas, to comply with the requirements of the disaster mitigation, and to augment its emergency planning efforts by formally adopting this mitigation plan. Uh, it is a very large document, it's 369 pages long, and it is available online. Um, if you'd like that, I can send that to you. It, the, under the analysis, is this plan, when adopted as a partner to the Johnson County and the City of Spring Hill Emergency Plan, Emergency Management Plan, makes us eligible for, uh, mitigation funds when they're available, um, and just continues that partnership along that disaster, uh, recovery system, and hopefully some mitigation efforts that we can avoid, uh, damage going forward. So it is staff's recommendation to adopt Resolution 2020-dash-R dash 29, adopting the 2019 Kansas Homeland Security Region L Hazard Mitigation Plan within the city limits of Spring Hill.
Any questions?
No, my only comment, and this is Chris Leighton's, is that it is important that we, uh, participate in this program. Uh, it's a section 404 of the set, of the Stafford Act, um, and so, not only, ahead of time, what can happen is funding comes through the state, and then they can disperse it out, um, through, through FEMA, but also if something were to happen, um, that was a broad thing that happens, like a tornado or whatever, um, this in place provides us the ability to get the potential for 404 funding, and I think it's also 406, uh, another funding program. So, uh, dealt with it when I was down in Puerto Rico, it is something that is good that if we, uh, make sure that we're participating in.
All right. Anything else, can I get a motion then?
Mr. President, I move we approve Resolution number 2020-dash-R dash 29, which is the adopting of the Kansas Homeland Security Region L Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Did I hear you, Mr. Leighton?
Uh, I don't know if you did or not, but yes, it was an aye.
It was an aye, okay.
Yes or aye, either way.
All right. Four, zero. Okay, Mr. Hendershot, I guess one more.
Thank you again. This agenda item addresses recycling options for 2021 with waste management. You'll recall, I believe it was in October, um, uh, that waste management came before the council and presented the status worldwide, if you will, of recycling efforts and the increased standards that are placed on those recycling efforts. Because of those increased standards, that always equals increased cost. Um, so from that point of view, then, what waste management presented to, to you folks at that time was three options. One was to maintain the current weekly schedule for pickups of recycles, recyclables, with an increase of 51 cents per month to meet industry standards. The second option was to maintain the current rates, but reduce collection to every other week, including a 96-gallon recycling cart versus the current 65-gallon cart. The third option was to make no adjustments, uh, but waste management would then inspect the carts at the curb, and if, and would not collect any carts that contained any contamination. Um, we all know that recycling is extremely important, but understanding what constitutes contamination sometimes is an, is an ongoing educational effort for all of us. Understanding that there would be a slight increase in cost, maintaining the current weekly correction program seems to meet the expectations of residents and encourages recycling efforts. Um, it is staff's recommendation that waste management continue with the current recycling efforts, including a weekly collection with an increase of 51 cents per home. And, uh, Mr. Owen, we do have two representatives, Mr. Blessing and Mr. Smith, are here from waste management, if there are any questions.
Well, I think that, that option you just mentioned is probably the correct one for us, because I, somebody holding on to the recycling for another extra week is just going to be a mess, and probably have more out there than we need, so.
I would agree.
I, I would kind of be leaning towards the, keep it the same with the slight increase, myself.
Increase per?
Residents. Per, per month. 51 cents per month, and then there is the 2% annual increase that's built into their contract.
Mr. Hendershot, I asked you this afternoon, um, I haven't had a chance to look it up myself, and I asked you, what is the current recycling rate?
Current recycling rate is $3.37 per residence. This would raise that to $3.88 per residence. Per month. And that's all included in that monthly trash bill that goes out.
Mr. Graves, anything?
I agree with you, I think, uh,
Yeah.
Maintaining that schedule's going to be hard if we move it to every other week, and it's, to your point, going to be quite a mess, so I'm good with it.
Thank, Mr. Boswell, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, uh, I don't really utilize recycling, however, I'm sure that it's, uh, from what I've gathered, and it's still coming, I'm still paying for it, correct?
It's included in your, in your monthly trash bill, yes.
Yeah, we don't have a recycling container or anything, are the, is the trash companies supposed to be supplying us with the recycling bin?
Yes, they do. We, we have, we have two representatives there, I think you could probably speak to them.
Mr. Leighton, any more questions?
No, that was it. I just want, if there is a motion, I want to have the motion to state the amount, it's $3.88 with the rate, that way, we're not just talking about a 51-cent raise.
Okay.
So, I mean, I could do the motion on that if, if anybody wants, but.
Ready.
Oh, okay, I'm just not able to see, um. Let's see here, sorry, my, my screen messed up, let me hear real quick. Council President, I move that we may, uh, maintain current weekly schedule for pickup of recyclables with an increase of 51 cents per month to meet industry standards, to a total of $3.88 per month.
All in favor, or a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jenkins, that brings you.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, this relates to an improvement project, 199th Street and 199th Street Roundabout. Um, there's two points that are raised with respect to this project, it's been necessary to acquire various easements and right-of-way for the construction of that roundabout. The, uh, land acquisition agent for the city, John Amrain, has been successful in obtaining three out of the four landowners easements and right-of-way, there is one that we're still negotiating with, but because of the project timeline, it's necessary to move forward with authorization for condemnation. Doesn't mean that we have to go all the way through that process, we can still negotiate, but it's necessary to proceed with that. Secondly, normally the condemnation would be conducted by the City of Spring Hill, because it would be in the corporate limits.
Mm-hmm.
Unfortunately, in this instance, there's a tract, we call it a strip tract, that is not in the city, therefore, it's necessary to enter into or consider the contract before you with Johnson County. They conduct the condemnation, city would be responsible for the condemnation costs, award, et cetera, and therefore, it's recommended that the governing body consider a motion to authorize and direct the mayor, in this case, the president, to execute the agreement for the improvement of a portion of 199th Street and Ridge Road with Johnson County relating to condemnation services.
Uh, Mr. Jenkins, do we have an idea, you said cost, do we know about what that is?
No, sir, I don't have that information. I could check with our, uh, land acquisition agent, he gives, he has numbers, uh, that he, uh, has provided, and we could provide that to you confidentially.
Right. I was just curious.
I, I'll do that, ask him.
The cost is completely on the county, with what you said, through the CARS program?
My information is it's the, the cost of condemnation, associated attorney fees would be paid through the CARS program, uh, through Johnson County, if I understand that correctly, uh, defer to the city administrator if I'm incorrect on that.
I'm right, yes.
Okay, so there's really no cost to us particularly, it's going to come through out of CARS?
Yes, yeah.
And the, the land acquisition as well?
The, I'm sorry, the land acquisition is?
That, that funding comes from the city or from CARS?
Well, it comes out of that project.
Out of the project?
Of which is partially funded by CARS.
Okay. So it'd be a mix somehow?
Yes.
Of paying for?
I, I would like to clarify, um, Council President and Council, that, uh, our land acquisition agent, city engineer, and myself have been working very hard with this owner, and I do believe that we are very, very close to that agreement.
Okay.
Uh, we have, we have met her request, and we are anxiously waiting and hoping that she's, this individual will sign those documents, and, and this would not be necessary, the condemnation, so we're working very, very hard, and very diligently to, to accomplish that, and not go through this process.
Right, very well. Right, very well.
But our practice has been in the past is to basically move the condemnation proceedings ahead in a forward in the ma- in the manner of that they decide that they don't want to participate or not lost time of getting the project done, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Then I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the agreement for the acquisition of easements by Johnson County relating to one hundred and ninety-ninth street and Ridgeview Road, uh, for the council president to authorize. And there's another.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second and amended if necessary.
Do I, do I need to make an amend, in your opinion, do I need to make an amendment to the, uh, motion that I've made, or is it stated as such?
Stated as such.
Thank you. Smoke, do you have a motion and second?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it's four zero. And I guess we'll move on to the next one.
The next, uh, number thirty and thirty-one are companion to each other. Deals with the, uh, utility locating services contract that needs to be, uh, bid. We sent bids out on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. The bids were open on November twelfth, twenty twenty. They received, the city received only one bid from USIC locating services. However, in reviewing that one bid, it was determined that the bid did not comply with the bid specifications. They had added or amended four different sections, which were all substantial matters, and therefore, uh, the request of the city council would be to approve the rejection, or excuse me, approve a motion to reject the non-responsive bid of USIC relating to utility locating services.
Any questions? Then I will entertain a motion.
So the motion is, Mr. President, to reject?
Yes, sir, it'd be, I I can restate it, the motion to reject
Yeah.
the non-responsive bid of USIC relating to utility lo- locating services.
As stated?
As stated.
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero. The next one, Mr. Jenkins?
Uh, item thirty-one, as I said, is a companion requesting that the governing body, uh, uh, consider a motion to authorize rebidding, uh, of the contract for utility locating services due to the fact that we have now rejected the only bid. Recommendation would be approval of that motion.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move we approve authorization to rebid, uh, request for proposal relating to utility locating services.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Landis, I think it's you.
Okay, thank you. This item is, um, engagement with Gordon CPA for audit of our December thirty-one, twenty twenty financials. Um, each year, the city engages in audit services with a certified public accounting firm for the purpose of auditing and preparing the city's financial statements. The finance department issued an RFP for audit services in early twenty twenty. Um, and on June twenty-second in twenty twenty, the council approved the award of bid to Gordon CPA. The audit of the December twenty nineteen financials was just presented to you recently, and we're gearing up for audit of this year's financials. The engagement letter, which summarizes the services that the city will receive, and an addendum, which was drafted by our city attorney, were provided to you for consideration in securing audit services for these financials. The tentative audit dates have been reserved for April of twenty twenty-one, which is a good timeframe for us. We really want to gear up towards getting those audits completed no later than June thirtieth in order to be, um, to have those available early in the year. The, um, budget impact, and I might note that in the RFP process, we asked uh, that anyone responding keep their rates steady for the two years of the twenty nineteen audit and the twenty twenty audit, so for the years of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And so that has been, um, included here in the amount, uh, not to exceed amount of twenty-one thousand, and that cost would be split between the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. And staff would recommend that the council approve the engagement letter and addendum to the engagement with Gordon CPA for the December thirty-one, twenty twenty audit.
Any questions?
Yes, um, Ms. Landis, I'm looking at the letter, um, that you're talking about. What section is the not to exceed amount in? I'm just, I'm having trouble.
It is on page, I believe it's page four, one second. I know the the pages aren't numbered, I apologize, so one, two, three, four, in the very last paragraph. We agree, mhm, the gross fee, including all expenses, shall not exceed twenty-one thousand.
Yep, that's what I was looking for.
Any other questions?
That was it.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move we approve, uh, the engagement with Gordon CPA LLC for December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
If I be four zero.
Okay, thank you.
And now it brings us to discussion items, and I gear up, it's nice.
I think you get me for the next two, so. All right, make sure I can show you here what we're working with. All right, so we, um, the city in had approved, uh, the council had approved a facility use agreement with the Spring Hill Rec Commission in late twenty nineteen, uh, for use of the civic center for their activities in twenty twenty. And, uh, when we approved that agreement, the foundation seemed solid. And the group that worked on this really at that time was our facility manager then, uh, Mr. Eckert and Mr. Peel of the Spring Hill Rec Commission. And we met again just earlier this week to discuss this again, to say, you know, twenty twenty didn't pan out the way we thought it was going to, so what we did is put together a little analysis, uh, to bring to you for some consideration. In the current agreement, we did agree that that we were going to charge them fifteen dollars an hour for an estimated three hundred and sixty facility hours per year for their pay-to-play activities. And then also in that agreement, they had agreed to provide ten hours per month of free programming, and that we would split the cost of the evening building supervisor with them for those hours. And so the payment terms were that we would bill them, uh, two times a year at twenty-seven hundred dollars each time for the pay-to-play use, and nine seventy-five was our estimate for splitting the cost of the evening supervision for the the, uh, free programming. And of course, then twenty twenty hit, and March, January through March was fairly, um, consistent with, uh, activities, but what we found is that they they we, they did lay off activities from March to July, and they did then again use it somewhat through July and November. Uh, but we really ended up with about a hundred and six hours of pay-to-play use, and only sixty-two hours of free activities where we would need to, only twenty-eight of those being in the evening time where we would have any cost to split. So we talked about, we put together this little analysis for you. Under the agreement, that would have been a total cost of seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. We did bill them early for first quarter, which wasn't actually what the agreement said. We bill them for actual use, so I have credited that amount here, which was paid early in the year. And under the current agreement, they would still owe six thousand thirty dollars for twenty-twenty's use. Um, actual use, though, we did go back and calculate how many times, uh, you know, each rental that they had and what it was for, and we come up with a pay-to-play amount of one thousand five ninety-seven fifty. And that fifty percent of the evening programming where we would have some cost in it would be two hundred and ten dollars. And after the credit for what they've already paid, it would be four hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. So when we sat down and we looked at it, the agreement does say that's going to be, that they're going to pay this, the standard amount, and that we would review it after half of the year. And so we did, you know, we did what we said we were gonna do. We came back and we we reviewed it. And because twenty twenty is just such a strange year, we are looking to ask you for your guidance or make a recommendation, um, that we bill for the actual use and for twenty twenty. But what we'd like to do is also bill for actual use in the first quarter of twenty twenty-one, and then get back together and review it again. And then, uh, I believe, under the existing contract or the agreement, I would need to maybe work with Mr. Jenkins to figure out exactly how to approach it, but we thought that we would just need to bring an amendment to you at the January meeting, just allowing us to go ahead and bill for actual use for the first quarter of next year. Um, and part of that would be, um, possibly backdating to this year in order to say that we would just only bill for actual use if that's the direction that you all would like to go. So this isn't a formal action item, so we're not actually taking a vote, but we really are looking to you for some guidance or maybe ahead not to say, yes, we think we'd like to move in that direction so that we, or no. And so we know what what, uh, direction to go with this, and, um, so, Mr. Eckert, do you have anything to add?
No, I think you covered it pretty well. One of the bigger things I took away from the meeting was is that initially, we just bill per hour, like we, like we talked about, and then revisiting it after the first quarter. That'll kind of give us a gauge of where we're at, though things will be changing as we go forward, so. I think that's a good way, just a s- a very simple approach to it.
It sounds like a reasonable.
What are we using it for right now? Like, what have they used it for in the last three, four months even?
Oh, sure, um, uh, cooking classes.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Peel is here. I'm sorry, I don't have my list with me.
Basically just classes, so cooking classes and art classes, we mainly do, uh, occasionally, uh, only call it special event, or like, you know, some kind of like isolated, but we have mostly our month.
So realistically, we'd be looking at cooking classes and that for the first quarter.
Classes, mhm.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable to, you know, do the billing. How you described it there until we get back on track and we can make some long-term adjustments to it, I think is reasonable. Mr. Leighton, any comments?
Uh, just a question, uh, go back to a previous slide. Originally, we anticipated the six thousand thirty for the year, correct? And we got forty-seven fifty, is that what we're looking at?
We initially anticipated seven thousand three hundred and fifty. We have already billed them earlier this year for thirteen hundred and twenty dollars, so I subtracted that off, and that's where you see the six thousand thirty.
A slight flip before I could kind of run through the numbers in my head. Okay, so, um, that's about a sixty-nine hundred dollar difference, somewhere around there, right? Uh, what type of budget impact is that? Is that gonna have any problems there?
Well, I will tell you, in a normal year, um, it probably, well, and actually, in this odd year, it probably would have had a, an enormous impact for us. We were actually able earlier this year, um, even under the restrictions under COVID and the, um, the health orders that were out, we were able to rent out some of our large spaces to small groups. Um, especially, I think we had, um, one or two dance studios and cheerleaders that didn't have another space to use. The dance studio specifically was too small to have all of their students in, so they were able to spread out in our gymnasium, still follow the guidelines, and they paid in order to use that facility. So those were classes that we probably otherwise wouldn't have had on the books. And, uh, so we actually did, uh, meet our budget for facility rentals for this year, which I know is surprising. We did not expect that, but we did, we did come out, um, pretty well on that.
Okay, so even though we're gonna be possibly evaluating it with the four eighty-seven fifty, our net will come out about equal of what we had expected for the budget, so.
For overall budget, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Don't tell me.
No? Okay, we'll move ahead as we kind of discussed here, and we'll bring something back to you in January for approval.
Sounds good.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And the next one, she must have.
Okay, this is our monthly spending update, and we've added to it our year-end forecast. And we did not have this discussion in November, simply because our only meeting in November was so close to the presentation in October, so. But because it is December, we do have a little bit better look at where we think we're going to end this year. And I have covered some items that we have done this year in order to get to where we are. So our approach to this, uh, pandemic potential unknown impacts, um, on city revenue sources was to do a few items, a few things early on in the year, uh, when we just weren't sure exactly where we were headed. We did select, um, we had select vacant positions that were frozen, and those remained unfilled for all of twenty twenty. We had conservative spending throughout twenty twenty while maintaining all of our city services. We extended payment plans for utility customers, and we had monthly updates for the council, for the city council to give us direction on what, on how we should proceed. This is a summary of just revenues across all funds. It's not specific to any one fund, but I wanted to give you a little bit of of, um, preview of where we're sitting on some of our revenue sources. Um, in several of these areas, that's definitely not where we started early in the year, anticipating that we would have had a fairly large impact on our revenues overall. For Advolum, across all funds, we are sitting at a three point three percent delinquency. That, uh, means that we we have not recognized three point three percent of the revenue that we anticipated for Advolum taxes, and we won't receive that this year. Now, as those ta- ta- taxes get paid, we will, at some future point, receive that money as a delinquent tax, but that's an unbudgeted thing, because we aren't, we cannot say when those will be received. Our motor vehicle taxes, um, which, um, includes motor vehicle, commercial trucks, all of those things, we have over all of our, um, budgets, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars exceeding our budgeted number. And early in the year, if you remember, we did, I had talked about how we had underbudgeted for motor vehicle for this year, and that, uh, we would go back and take a look at it later. So now we see where what that impact of underbudgeting for motor vehicle was, is that we did actually come out, um, uh, with quite a significant amount, um, in excess of our budgeted number. Our special assessments, which live in our debt service fund, we, I want to clarify, I think it, in October, we talked about, I said that we had, we had received all of the special assessments that we had budgeted for. However, that's not a very clear statement, and I budget for a delinquency. We've always had a delinquency. It varies from year to year. But it, because that is a fairly tight, um, tax or mill levy, um, budget or fund, we don't want to ever get to a point where we don't bring in enough revenue, so we do budget for a delinquency in special assessments. So we did collect a hundred percent of the revenue we budgeted for, for assessments. However, we are eight percent delinquent on the certified amount for special assessments. So right now, at at the end of this year, we're sitting at ninety-one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars uncollected in special assessments. Uh, for sales tax, overall, this does impact, uh, multiple funds, both our city special sales tax fund, our county special sales tax fund, and our general fund. We are just over ten percent, um, exceeding our budgeted number for sales tax. If you recall, early this year, we, uh, anticipated that that was going to be a pretty tough hit for us. And, uh, where we ended up working out to is not necessarily that sales tax is so high, but use tax was higher than anticipated in all of those sources. So we do get sources from our local city sales and use tax. We get a percentage or a portion of the Johnson County sales and use tax, and also a portion of the Miami County sales and use tax. And all of those funds together, um, were ten percent over what we had budgeted for each of those lines. Our franchise fees are down slightly. We are sixteen thousand dollars uncollected at the end of this year. Uh, our estimated, uh, two point seven percent under budget. Our development fees, which are in the general fund, these are not the system development fees, but these are, um, planning license, uh, permits, and all of the development fees that go along with that. We exceeded our budget by one hundred and sixty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. That is an estimate. I don't have December, com- December's not complete. December's not completed yet, so I'm not sure exactly where we'll land there, but that's my estimate. On water utility sales, early in the year, we were uh very cautious with our water fund. We wanted to make sure that we were gonna collect. We weren't certain of how people were going to be able to pay their accounts. We are seven percent over um exceeding our budgeted numbers for water utility sales. Um that does include any receivables that are sitting out there. So we're seven percent above what we budgeted for water utility sales. Our system development fees for water, this is generally a much lower number than system development fees for sewer. If you remember, our water area is much smaller than our our sewer um utility fund area. And so we are on target to meet the budget for what we estimated for water development fees. Our sewer utility sales are uh just over three and a half percent exceeding our budgeted utility sales. And our system development fees for sewer are three hundred and twenty thousand dollars above what we budgeted. So generally, from year to year, we estimate, uh generally, I'll talk to Mr. Burton. We estimate where we think we're going to land for residential and commercial permits. A lot of times in the commercial permitting, you don't know what's coming and when it's coming and residential, you don't really know, but you can estimate a little bit better. And this year, we do have um three hundred and twenty thousand that we didn't budget for, so that is we're moving in the right direction. Um and building permits, and I think you've seen those reports that have come out, is where we stand on numbers for the year. This is the impact on our sewer fund.
Ms. Landis, if you can go back to that slide, please. Can you expound on the special assessments when it talks about the the eight percent delinquency? Can the does does, is that year over year? We're looking at eight percent or how how? Explain that a little deeper, please.
Sure, that is just for the tax, the 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 assessments that were certified in August of twenty nineteen and showed up on the tax bill in December or November of twenty nineteen due half December and half May of twenty twenty. We get that revenue starting in January of twenty twenty, so we consider that a twenty twenty revenue. And that eight percent is what we are delinquent based on the number that we certified at the end of of twenty nineteen. So we have not collected ninety one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars of what we certified to the county for the twenty twenty budget year.
Will we eventually collect that? We just don't know when.
Hopefully. So yes and no, that it is the short answer. Yes, every time that a property sells or the property owner pays their taxes up, we get our portion of those assessments. If the property is foreclosed on by the county for unpaid taxes over a longer period of time, then um the the answer is oh not as solid. We we don't know. It depends on the bid on the property. If someone were to come in and bid very little of nothing or less than the total taxes and assessments that are due, we're not going to get that we would get a proportionate share of what is collected after fees are paid. So whenever the counties foreclose on a property, we have a a much smaller chance of recouping those assessments. But anytime that the property is sold, um or foreclosed on by the bank who will eventually sell it, we will collect at the time that that it that property closes.
Okay, so the top one, the Advolumum, i- is that typically the biggest revenue?
Advolumum and sales tax are both our biggest revenue.
Those are the the big ones.
Ms. Landis, Chris Leighton. What's your typical budgeted uh delinquency rate? If you had said it, I didn't catch it. What is our budget delinquency rate?
For Advolumum or for special assessments?
Uh for both.
So generally, I budget a two percent delinquency for each fund. So the in the general fund, so that's for the taxes in the general fund, the taxes in the debt service fund, the mill, you know, the taxes collected in the fire and the cemetery fund. So typically, I apply a two percent delinquency. That's part of the state budget format. Um it allows you to apply that per fund based on what you're realizing um or what that impact might be for each one of those funds when you budget for them. For special assessments, typically, I take five percent off of what I think we're going to certify when I plan that budget. That's not always a hard and fast number because, say, for example, last year, we had, I knew what number we had previously certified. I knew exactly what we were gonna certify for current um benefit districts, but late in the year after certification, um or I'm sorry, before certification, but after the budget was put together, we did end up with more um two more benefit districts that went on the tax roll. So when we long term financed those, we didn't know exactly what that interest rate was going to be, so that causes that number to move a little bit. So typically, the short answer is typically a budget for a five percent against special assessments in the debt service fund. And right now, we're sitting at eight percent delinquency overall.
And then my question is, is at the previous council meeting, I asked for hard numbers kind of for each one of these items. Do you have a table to show that?
I'm sorry, I I do not have that, but I will provide that to you. I apologize. I did not remember you asking. A hard number for each one of these items as far as what we are delinquent or where we stand right now or what the forecasted number is.
Actually, a money monetary number to each one of these line items.
So these are categories, um and so there are multiple line items for each one of these categories. But in those budget reports that I'll be sending out tomorrow for November, you should be able to see in each one of those, but I would be happy to put together something um that's related just to this screen, if that would be helpful.
That's the main main point. So when people see these bulleted items, a three point three delinquency, we usually anticipate a budget of around two percent. What is that difference of amount, which is one point three percent? What is the hard number for people to see? What is that difference in that number?
Yes, I can certainly provide that. Is there any other questions on this screen?
Mr. Leighton, any more questions for you?
No, I was just kind of hoping that we would have that for this one.
I apologize. I I tried to provide that here on some of the line items. I didn't provide it on the Advolumum. I did give you the hard numbers, but I didn't show the budget versus the actual. That is, uh I don't have a forecast for every one of those individual line items. Um that it's not in the system, so I I but I will manually put something together for you. And there's no decision to be made here. This is just a review of where I'm guessing we'll be at the end of the year. So we also still have fifteen days worth of business plus any expenditures that come in after the beginning of the year to apply back to the current year's budget. So I know this is revenue, but so our forecast numbers can move some. But I can certainly put something together for this and then we can review again in January where we actually landed at the end of December.
And the point is, is that most people, when they look at this, do not know what the three point three percent is and that there's a two point oh percent built into it and that there's a one point three percent difference. And it doesn't have to be to the decimal point point zero one. The point is to give an order of magnitude so people understand what that one point three percent is. So they don't have to try to do math and then come up with some math that really doesn't work out and then they're trying to figure out where these numbers are coming from.
Sure, I understand. So if I can move on to the general fund, I'll show you what I do have for that. I just did not make this um presentation as detailed. I wanted to give you an overview of where I was expecting us to go. Um but I absolutely will provide the detail and then if we have additional questions, we can certainly circle back around to it at the January meeting. Or if you have questions before, then we can go back over it and I can put something on the website for anyone else who's interested, whatever works. This is the where we talked about the general fund. Um and I ha- I do have another screen where you might be able to see it broken down for the general fund a little bit better. So this is where we started the beginning of this year and we had identified some steps to offset the impact, potential impact of the uh pandemic and what that impact might be in our revenue. So this is just specific to the general fund. This talks about the uh beginning of the year, we had an unbudgeted fund rollover in the general fund of a hundred and eighty four thousand. The revenues we collected above budget was two hundred and forty thousand four ninety five. And then it goes on here to uh outline the amounts associated with frozen vacancies, with the unfilled vacancies and the benefit savings for those positions, as well as the unbudgeted twenty seventh payroll in twenty twenty. And some unbudgeted expenditures, um which are overtime to offset some of the vacancies. Also unbudgeted expenditure adjustments and overall operating expenditure line items and the closure of the aquatic center for the twenty twenty season. So for the general fund, we're looking at a budget um a an amount left over in the budget that would roll over to next year of six hundred and thirty nine thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. And I'll show on the next screen, you'll see how that all lines out. But this is just to give you an overview of what the the main items that we had identified early on and how it impacts what we were trying to do. And it actually, it obviously it worked. And we had some other outside factors that worked in our favor, like some of our revenue sources that we didn't actually control. But this is what we did, what we did have control over and this is how it impacted us um in our spending plan approach, which is what we uh went through each month. We had also identified some additional adjustments that we could make if we needed to and we will go back and revisit those at the top of twenty one and see based on what whatever we're forecasting in January and beyond against that budget. We can certainly come back and relook at these items if necessary. And we've talked about the last couple of months, how there is a lot of discussion out there about how additional home foreclosures and while we didn't see them early in the year, the potential is there for them to hit us late this year and rolling into early of next year of twenty twenty one. And so these are items that we still want to leave on the table, things that we want to be able to come back to and discuss later. And so that we could use them to our advantage to tackle any budget shortfalls we might have in twenty twenty one. That is a an outcome of of what happened in twenty twenty. This is the specific numbers related to the general fund and the year end forecast. So while it doesn't show what the percentages were, but it does show the revenue, well, it does, it does to some degree. It shows by revenue source and we use these categories in our general fund to be able to identify the areas that you can't apply a general number to. Can't say, well, we're, you know, sales tax, we expect it to go up by this percent. And the same percentage applies to development fees and municipal courts and facility rentals. So we separate those things out by category so that we can better forecast them individually. And so this shows that in the twenty twenty budget column, this is what you was approved for the twenty twenty budget. The twenty twenty forecast, those are my numbers. I've used by line item um an approach to come up with an estimate of where I think we're going to land at the end of this year. So we dig, I went through every single line item in the general fund. And we have gone through some of the detailed expenditures and put a really good estimate to this. I I'm not telling you it's going to be perfect and it may be above or below because again, we still have business to do in twenty twenty. Um so where I anticipate that we're going to land at the end of the year is that we're going to be able to roll over um out of our revenues, or I'm sorry, we brought in five hundred and ninety nine thousand four forty five instead of what we budgeted for the four hundred and fourteen thousand six sixty. So you can see just based on how this uh table works here, that the operating fund balance was forty four percent over what we had budgeted for this year. Our reserve fund balance is the seven hundred and fifty thousand. We've talked about that before. We do try to keep that in this budget. The other number we can use towards operating expenditures or needs that arise over time, but the seven fifty, we always want to keep that secure. That's what we've we've worked towards um keeping our bond rating up because of that reserve level. If you look at the property taxes here in this fund, um the impact on property taxes, which is not just Advolumum, it also includes motor vehicle, commercial motor vehicle, all of those items, we are one point two two percent over what we budgeted. Again, if you go back to what I was talking about earlier, motor vehicle is up significantly, but Advolumum taxes were down. But the impact on the general fund for both is that we have an excess of our budgeted number, thirty thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. So for sales tax, again, we're up at just over ten percent. Our franchise fees are down just over sixteen thousand or two point six eight percent. Um our sales and services, which include our development fees, the aquatic center, the municipal court, facility rentals. Um each of those have their own line items here, so you can see, for example, that our development fees um as we covered on the previous screen are the um difference in cash is one hundred and sixty nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. That's what I'm estimating for the end of the year. It could be low. Again, anything could happen in two weeks. Um in the development world, the aquatic center, because it was closed, we've we did not recognize any revenue for the aquatic center, municipal court and facility rentals are both there. Uh Mr. Leighton, to your question earlier about facility rentals, so we had budgeted twenty four thousand, but we actually received thirty one thousand two eighty five. So we did collect just over seven thousand more in facility rentals um in twenty twenty than what we had originally anticipated.
Sounds like a lot of dance classes.
Yes, yes. Um and we did use our community center some, you know, we were able to keep it stay stay under the total number of participants and we were able to rent that out as well. So we were able to offer that convenience to uh, you know, people who needed that this year for those things that that just couldn't be canceled. Um so overall, for the general funds, I'm anticipating that just the operating revenues themselves were gonna be just over two hundred and forty thousand over budget. And um or in excess of our budgeted number, the total revenues, when you add that plus the rollover amount from last year, looks to be about four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in excess of what we budgeted. And then also in our expenditures, we had a savings of two hundred and fourteen thousand. So when you add those three numbers together and estimating that we're going to roll over after our fund balance reserve, um uh approximately six hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. And that would be coming into the new year of twenty twenty one.
Go back, please. Total revenues. Looking at total revenues, oh, okay. What I'm trying to look at is is how much we would actually encumber into next year. Do you see what I'm asking?
Oh, I have that on another slide. Um if you give me a minute, if I don't answer your question, I'd be happy to come back to this.
Yeah, because what it looks like is was our revenues were four point three six percent higher than expected. Expenditures were three point six one lower, then that means that we have a significant number that we'll encumber for next year.
That's that's six hundred and thirty nine thousand of uh that you see at the bottom under operating balance. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
That would be the encumbered amount.
Yes, that would be the fund balance rollover to next year. Um however, we did budget for a particular amount in our twenty twenty one budget that we estimated to roll over and that's what I have on the upcoming screen. Um so I can show you where where we are in comparison to what we expected to roll over. Do you have anything else on this screen?
No, I'll let you continue because like you might answer my question.
Okay. All right, so this is just a fund balance review in general and I did not do every single one that we have. We typically do that presentation in January. Again, because it's a lot easier to show you the actual numbers instead of just my guestimates for the year, but this does show you my forecasted fund balance for each of the budgeted funds. I didn't go into the others because they're very specialized, gift funds, those types of things, but these are the budgeted funds. And in the general fund, we had budgeted for nine hundred and fifty eight thousand two sixty five, but we're rolling over one just under one point four million. And the debt service fund, we're we're rolling over in excess of what we expected. And the same story is true for every one of these funds with the exception of the excise tax fund. And that is slightly lower, but we did budget in that or we did plan in the excise tax fund to um cover the design for the hundred ninety ninth um street roundabout. And so we did take that out of there this year. And we're still working towards that and we haven't completed that project yet. There's a potential uh that there will be some excess availability within the uh financed project in order to roll some of those design costs in, which would then free up cash in this fund to further. Um fund other street projects that are coming up on our radar and that we have in our C I P. Uh but I won't know that until we get further into that project. So for now, I have it listed that we're we're coming out a little short, but. For everything that we have earmarked in this fund, we're still in excess of what we needed to be. Would you like for me to cover each one of these individually, or do you have questions about this slide, anyone?
I think the question I would have for you, Melanie, or Ms. Landis, excuse me, is um. These beginning fund balances, the rolling balances, it's not a single year balance rollover, correct?
Correct, it's it's in excess of what was budgeted in the previous year. So yes, it comes from excess revenues and and underspent expenditures. And that's how you get your year end fund balance. And yes, you would have normally had a fund balance rolling from a previous year as well.
Right, so the nine fifty eights, two sixty five is not all from one year, it's from being built up over several years.
Yes, that's one way to look at it. It does also include the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we keep in reserve. That we don't use towards operating expenditures.
Correct. The point is though, is is that we didn't bring in an extra nine hundred and fifty eight thousand two hundred and sixty five dollars in a single year. It's a rolling balance.
Correct, it's actually two hundred and eight thousand dollars that we rolled over from previous years and operating expenditures. Um or and revenues, yes, to the beginning of two thousand and twenty one. You are correct. Do you have any other questions? And I will email this out to you when this is posted. I've already sent it to Kate to put on our website for tomorrow. Um so if you have questions, I absolutely can answer whatever you have. I can send you the supporting documentation. Um it but in order to keep this to a relative high level, you know, discussion this evening, it didn't include a lot of detail. Um but we certainly can provide to you whatever you need to to look at our overall financials. And in our monthly reports, um we do have the um budgeted funds, those reports are in there. We are start starting to include the trial balance reports for the unbudgeted re- um funds as well. There's the financial snapshot, and then earlier this week, the debt report went out to you, and it has also been posted to our website as well. Um so those are additional resources to be able to find what you might be looking for. Um but anytime again that you need information.
You will keep posting, keep it up to date when it needs to be changed.
Mr. Leighton, did you have other questions on this slide?
No.
Nope, and we can certainly talk later if you'd like. Okay, and if there's not any other questions, then that completes my presentation for this evening, but again, I'm happy to answer whatever you might have.
I don't have anything this time, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Landis.
Thank you.
And that brings us to announcements and reports, and I have a couple of things, Mr. Hendershot, for you. I wanted to thank you for the emails and our discussion about the uh. The conduit issue. But it it did bring me a couple of concerns, and I figured I'd clear them up with you here and let the council know where I'm coming from. Is, I understand it's an ongoing and we're saving money on it because you're you're doing it, you know, in the smaller groups and getting it pulled with the one dig. The cons, do I guess first off, the roller conduit that was for Veterans Park. Was that paid for with Veterans Park money or general fund money? Or does it? Okay, so it's not tied to that specifically, so okay, there, do we know about how much that roller conduit costs us?
I don't have that number.
Yeah, no problem. What you you made the comment in 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 our talking is that, you know, a lot of it was gonna be for signal lights. I think you told told us that he would be putting ground for future infrastructure, signal lights being one of them. Uh I guess what puzzled me is during our R F P with the uh broadband. And the three hundred and fifty thousand for city buildings, never heard anything about signal lights. But it was about getting our city buildings connected together. And you mentioned that, yeah, we can get the pool connected to conduit and and other city buildings. And I can see in thinking of that, that price of three fifty to do all that during that R F P, I'm thinking. Okay, you're gonna do it monthly or every two months or every three months, whatever it may be that to come up with, hey, this person's gonna pull a conduit for us. And I understand that you have uh purchasing, you know, uh agreement, you can purchase, is it ten thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, which I agree, I think you need to have that, it's important to have for you to have it for the city. But I look at this is, by doing it that way. Is we have a project that's whatever set price is gonna be, we don't know. But by you building or paying out every month or every two months. You're going over, even though you're keeping it monthly, you're keeping it below the ten thousand, the whole project is gonna be well over the ten thousand dollars. I look at it as it's a way for the city to sidestep our purchasing policy. Can I see where I'm going with that? Is because because we're dealing with one project and you're buying as we go. Because technically it'd be one project, you're you're putting conduit in the ground for the city. Is by doing it that way, you are spending more than the ten thousand dollars for that project. You're just spreading it out, so it's a way to get past. I look at it as a way to get past oversight, whether you are or not, that's my opinion is suddenly the. The signal light showed up as a reason to do it, but I think it has more with. My opinion is, we wanna get this city's network in for the buildings, which I don't think we need. We're gonna have internet to all the buildings, so we can just use the internet with V P Ns. And I'm not sure if we have we done enough research into the traffic lights. That do we need to do all this for that?
Okay.
Okay, that's where I'm coming from with it is, is the amount of money we could end up spending is gonna be well over your ten thousand. So I look at it as that needs to be a project that needs to come back to council for approval. Or at least some guidance if you're doing it, because you could end up spending whatever amount of money. You know, if you're doing seven thousand at a time, you know, ten times, you're seventy thousand into us or whatever to do this. That's what I see, that's what I'm looking at with that, okay?
Okay.
Now, have I made it clear as mud or?
Well, I I I would like to respond.
Sure.
There is absolutely no intention of sidestepping anything.
All right.
Um this is an effort to maximize our dollar value. Uh for infrastructure and. Yes, I did mention traffic signals, I mentioned the ability to provide wifi at parks. To provide enhanced services, things such as the aquatic center, et cetera. In my opinion, the opportunity to save money for that conduit to be installed now at about. Well, the 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 figures that I.
I'll grant you that.
Yeah, we we were able to negotiate this this uh small amount of conduit going in at two dollars and fifty cents per foot.
Right.
Where the going rate for an individual project is anywhere from eight to twelve dollars a square foot. So I've I sincerely feel that this is a responsible and wise use of tax dollars. For in- infrastructure that could be used in the future. I did mention traffic signals with the development opportunities that we are looking at. There is a high likelihood of traffic signals in the hundred ninety nine Webster area. There is a high likelihood as we proceed with the two hundred and twenty third street transportation plan of multiple signals there. Those signals um should be um connected to Mid America Regional Council Scout Program. Which monitors those and provides law enforcement uh security videos, et cetera. Um this is an opportunity for us to begin to begin building at a very low cost. Um some of that infrastructure that could be used in the future, and if we were were to put it in the future, it would be much more expensive than what we're able to get it now. Um as far as the roller conduit, um as I mentioned in my email to you, that was purchased for a for another project. To run conduit out to Veterans Park. We were very careful on how we estimated how much is on that roll, how much is gonna be needed to Veterans Park so that we don't get into that. Um and this the amount that we were able to uh put in with this effort was covered under that. Um and with within that role. Your other, your other, another question you ask is, would we be purchasing additional conduit? I think the answer is yes, and I think it's a responsible purchase so that when opportunities such as this come around, because we don't. Excuse me, we don't know when it might be. Um that we're able to analyze and look at those opportunities, does it make sense? To be able to partner with that contractor at that point, not all opportunities will.
Right.
Um but does it make sense and then we'll analyze those? Um so, eh eh you know, no, there, you know, to to respond to you, sir, there is absolutely no intent of sidestepping anything. Um I saw this uh as an opportunity for us to put in what could be some vital. Infrastructure going forward at a very, very low cost.
And I don't disagree that that that's a good way to go.
Okay.
I do think it's going to end up developing into a bigger project that the council probably needs to have a say.
I understand, okay.
So that's that's my biggest thing.
Okay.
Mr. Riffle, do you have something?
How many feet uh is this project that we're working on?
I I I wanna say it was around twenty six hundred feet, somewhere like that.
I think I saw where you the roll is like eight thousand foot roll or something.
And I I I could be off on that, but.
Yeah, it was rough.
And did the one dig policy ever get officially enacted within the city?
No, it's been discussed numerous times. Um but again, it it just makes sense to take advantage of when that when that hole is open, when that ditch is open, or when that contractor is here. Pulling infrastructure, um that if you've got the out, it 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 really doesn't matter if it's. Uh Atmos gas or electric company, or whoever it might be that's opening those the those the ground. It just makes sense financially and responsibly of of tax dollars used to take advantage of that when we can. Save us money down the road.
Ms. Riffle, when when we talked about the one dig, I think we also discussed it, that it there is no mandate that. One company has to do it.
It's correct.
Correct. They can say, sorry, I don't wanna participate in your one dig program, I'm doing my own thing. So I wasn't sure we needed a actual policy to say we're going to participate in the one dig program.
The the dig once policy does much more than just provide opportunities such as that, it it provides um. Uh vital statistics for where the where that infrastructure may be located, regardless of what type of infrastructure it is. Um it also protects our streets from being over excavated in a short amount of time. Um it does a lot of things, and it's it's very much a partner document to the right of way permit document. We just have not had the opportunity to complete that one dig once policy.
Okay.
Um that Councilwoman Hughes has been very adamant about getting that.
And maybe I work on that, but. But you see where I'm coming, this project can end up being a bigger project, that I think that the council should have some input or some direction or. Understanding as a whole of what we're doing. You know, it's not a one time deal, as you said, it's. It could keep going for a year or two years of us doing this, and I think there needs to be some. Information given to the council so that we have a an understanding of it. And we know kinda where you're going.
I appreciate that.
Does it make sense? Okay. Um the other one I had is, I had the pleasure to go to the last planning commission meeting. And we got new people, so I think we had a total of eight people there, eight commissioners, and we're looking, you know, and I think the mayor's working very hard to get the ninth one in. And the if the thing came up, I never thought about either, but we have nine people are gonna be on this commission. But we have seven screen or six screens up here. So on that particular meeting, one person was sitting at the chair where Mr. Jenkins is, had no screen to look at. So information was not able to show up to them that to look at information on their computer. And it's an oversight, and I think it's something we probably need to address. To find out some way to maybe temporarily provide them some type of a screen now. For these people to have those computer screens to do something, I think the planning commission is a very important commission for us. And those people need the information, a lot of it's on their computer, if they can't see it. They're either having to jump up here to look over somebody's shoulder or something else, but I think we need to look at. What options we have to get that up and running. At least a temporary fix, and then maybe we start looking at what can we do in the future to make it a permanent solution.
I I would ask Mr. Owen, because I wasn't in that planning commission meeting. Um was the information that was available on the monitors, was that also available on these large monitors?
No, I don't believe it was.
Okay, I I I I don't know.
I didn't see it, no, and that's that's why I brought it to you, I just bring it up, it's just a, it's it's something I saw, and I know there was some frustration.
Right.
One of the members, and I figured, well, I'll at least bring it up so we can talk about it, maybe get some thoughts of.
Sure.
Is there a temporary solution, we can get that working? And then maybe we can start working on, is there a permanent way we can do it better for them?
When the when the dais was designed. Um there was a lot of of. Work put in to make it as workable as possible, economically as possible for all boards.
Right.
We all realize that a nine member board, one, is going to be very tight. Then with covid, it makes it even more of a challenge. Um so to get that monitor ability down on these tables is challenging. Um I I can't make any assurances.
Come up with possibly maybe a solution of some sort that we can make it work for them, to make it beneficial or. You know, some, because sometimes some of the stuff they're looking at, you wanna look at your screen right in front of you, because I know I do.
Sure.
Instead of trying to look up here to see it, you need to look at it a little closer.
Right.
So if there's something we can do to help them, I think that would be a benefit and something maybe we can. At least do a temporary fix for them. I know not all days are we gonna have all nine of them there. Yeah, but hopefully we'll have the majority and we'll have more of them there, so I would like to see us do what we can.
Hopefully at some point, the the pandemic will come to an end where we can get back to normal business.
We, yeah, we can, we can do some other.
That would be ideal.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So that's. All right, thank you. Uh that's all, any other questions from back there that need any? Okay, uh Mr. Leighton?
Um just uh two things, one is um. Kind of uh with what you were talking about with the conduit. I think what we probably need to do is create a budget, or not a budget, a project um for this. Uh that Public Works works with people on staff. For an estimate of about how much conduit we would be using on a yearly basis. Um and then try to get that as established as a project that can be tracked. Uh and then we have an idea for the expenses for the year. Um and then if it's gonna exceed the ten thousand dollars for the purchasing policy, then we can kind of look at that as a budgeted item. And have it being tracked as a project. Um and then staff can do it on an as needed basis that way. Um that way, it's a pre authorized ahead of time. We know what we're doing for a budgeted, and we can still take advantage in a short timeline. With uh the opening of the trenches, so I think that that might be something that we need to consider. Um.
I would agree with you, I think that's a good solution, what you put it in, is uh.
Well, I think that maybe Mr. Hendershot, can you work with uh Public Works to and the Lamp Ryerson to uh create a project for that?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Right, and and we we track those expenses internally now. Um and but to answer your question, yes, I think we can, we can see what the options are there and in include Ms. Landis from budgeting standpoint, et cetera. Um and and make a team effort to create a project of some type.
And I think that would give us and give us the goals or, you know, what do you see doing and and where we wanna go, so we kinda have a clue what's going on.
Okay.
And then it makes it so that people don't sit there and say, well, I just don't feel comfortable with what's occurring, because we are tracking it that way. And people feel like there's more transparency. I don't think that staff is purposely doing anything, but it can, the appearance that if if you wanna be. Um a little critical of it to say that it is not transparent, but I don't think staff has the intent. I think it it's a matter of visit, how you, how you see it from the outside looking in. Um so I like to kinda see that, I don't know about the rest of the council, but that's kinda what I like to see on this. Um then, um Mr. Burton. Uh you and I previously had discussions on the Glenn Hammond property on Webster. Uh it used to be the weapon, wimpy property. Can you update the stuff that you've sent me in an email and possibly send that out to s- to the rest of the council? Um what I would say is was when I did pass by it on Monday, when I had to head to the airport and I just didn't have a chance to. Um, what I would say is was when I did pass by it on Monday, when I had to head to the airport, and I just didn't have a chance to kind of follow up with this yet, um, I planned on talking to you during council um, reports. Um, it still does not look like it's a very stable bracing system. Um, and let's just say I'm less than impressed when I visually look at it that it's a stable brace. Um, so I'd kind of like to have somebody go back out and look at that again. Um, for that that Hammond's property, the Wimpy property. Uh, and then if you can take the information you previously sent me, and then maybe if you could disperse that to the rest of the council, um, that could be useful.
Yes, I'll be more than happy to. Uh, and I don't know if you caught what or heard what I said earlier is when we sent notification out, it was under the Wimpy's uh, ownership. And then like three days before we were gonna take action on it, uh, it changed ownership to uh, the Hammond Trust. And then re-notification has been issued on that too. We we have asked for the wall to come down and everything be picked up.
And I understand that, but our email and you even then was when that notice had been resent out, and that was several weeks ago. And that thing is, if the intent is to have it come down, and it's an unsafe structure, um, potentially, um, we shouldn't be waiting so long to have that taken down.
Okay, I'll I will look into it, sir. And I will send out uh, all the information.
Anything else, Mister Leighton?
Uh, that's it.
Alright.
Uh, uh, other than to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Yes. Mister Edwards?
Uh, I just wish everyone, I hope you had a happy Thanksgiving, I hope you stay safe. And uh, I I wish you a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Mister Graves? Mister Hendershot, sir?
Thank you. I'd like to uh, ex- extend kudos, for lack of a better term, to anyone and everyone who was involved with Hometown Holidays. Um, an event
Parking lot.
An an event that took on a much different form than what we're accustomed to through the years. Um, but from the the elements of that that I participated in, I thought it was just outstanding. Um, to adjust be because of the pandemic in the way that we did, and for the public to turn out and be acting as responsibly as they did in in with regards to the pandemic was just awesome. Um, the numbers that I got from Ms. Schupert was, that I passed along to the council, was approximately a hundred and fifty um, vehicles came out to Veterans Park for the Rotary uh, event out there with Santa. Um, and also was a fundraiser. And then there was, I think, some sixty-some folks that listened to the mayor's Facebook Live. And then um, as of Monday or Tuesday, there was another thousand views of that. Um, it was just a a a great message from all and a and a great response from from our residents, as well as a great effort by multiple people within the city staff, the rec department, the Rotary, anybody and everybody who was involved. Um, I I just wanna say thank you and well done. Um, we've been announcing several times over our website and social media improvements at a hundred and ninety-first and Ridgeview. Uh, that is in, excuse me, in connection one, to a safety issue of a of a sharp drop-off in that ditch area out there, and two, is as the part of the detour route for the roundabout project when that starts. Um, that project is now finished, the road is is reopened. Uh, we had a great partnership there with Johnson County, provided lots of labor, lots of equipment. And uh, really was a great assistance and and enabled our street department to uh, work with them and get that done in a very short amount of time. There was some inconvenience to for east-west traffic there. Um, but uh, eh, the road is reopened at this time. Uh, there was a comment made this evening about Webster Street. Um, I would just like for everyone to realize that in the packet tonight, there were two two items on Webster Street. The one was the formal approval of the project for cars funding. And the second one was for the design of that for construction in twenty twenty one. So that Webster Street project is moving along um, at at the rate that it should, and that it's allowed to. The county has approved that uh, that expenditure or that funding method as well. Uh, the last one is, we did apply for some what's called STP funding, or Service Transportation Planning or Programming Funding uh, for some road projects. One in particular was a hundred and ninety-ninth from Ridgeview to Renner. Unfortunately, that project did not score high enough. There was some extremely good competition from all communities in Johnson County. Uh, we were not selected for funding for that, but we will continue to to march down that path for not only that um, section of road, but many others uh, to help give us uh, additional funding sources so that we can make the improvements to the roads and streets that the the residents recognize need to be done, and we recognize need to be done. Uh, we continue to march down that path of of trying to supplement our budget um, with additional funds, be that through the state, through the region, through the county, through the federal, whatever is available. We continue to march down those paths. It's extremely competitive. Um, and it 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 just a lot depends on the project and how what funding you're applying for, the merits there that it scored on, et cetera. Um, Dan Miller, our city engineer, was very instrumental in in that uh, proposal. And as I said, unfortunately, we just were not, did not score high enough for that funding source. Other than that, uh, Mister Council President, I will say Happy Holidays to everyone. Stay well, stay healthy, and uh, next meeting is scheduled for January the fourteenth, I believe. So, happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you, sir.
I just have a question for uh, Mister Hendershot. You talked about Webster Street. Uh, do we have a, like a deliverable or milestone dates for these, this project? You know, when we have a design, what's the period of time for the design? What's the period of time for when we actually start? We we gotta start treating it like a real project, you know? So, what are our milestones? Whether it's a Burke breakdown structure, what is, you know, all of that? You know, what are the milestone dates? Um, what's the critical path item? Same thing with the roundabout. We need to start treating these like real projects. I wanna know what milestones we have. I want those, so we can sit there and track. And um, I want those on those projects, the roundabout, Webster, I want all that. I want us to have a schedule. I want to put that out there. If we have it, that's fine, and that's good, but we should be able to be able to communicate that to the community so they have an idea of when they're gonna be able to actually see the tangible results of these projects for them.
I I don't have that schedule, sir, but I will get it and get that distributed. On on both projects. Obviously, the one on uh, the on the roundabout depends on the access or the the ability to gain those easements and what delays that may or may not cause, and hopefully that doesn't cause any delays. I will get those, I will get that. Yes, sir.
And if you develop a schedule with that, then you just have a sliding start date, right?
Yes.
And then every, it continues goes after that.
Yes, sir, I will get that.
Let's get that out so people know.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Mister Leighton?
Uh, no.
Okay. Ms. Landis?
No report, thank you.
Madam Clark?
Uh, just happy holidays, basically, and uh, that's all I got.
Alright. Alright, Mister Jenkins?
No report, Mr. President.
Chief Henson?
No report.
Mister Burton?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank all the city staff in helping uh, to make sure that we were able to um, get QuickTrip to commit to the city. Uh, it was a it's a long project, uh, and there was a lot of work by all staff, so thank you.
Alright. Ms. Jones, do you have anything you wanna report? Alright. Let's see, I think I've got everybody, so make a motion for adjournment.
I'm moving this meeting, the City Council Spring Hill, on December tenth, twenty twenty, come to an end.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank everybody very much for the help.
Hit that gavel one time.
Hit it, you wanna hit it one more?
Return.
There. There you go. I get signed paperwork.
I have a mortgage I want you to sign.